Okay, it's starting to record.
If you have cell phones on you, would you please either turn them off or turn them to vibrate? Time is right now is 7:30. I want to recognize the open meeting act that's up on the postscript there, locations right over there. Let's go ahead and get into our roll call, please.
Klinschmidt?
Yes.
Byway?
Yes.
None? Oshner, yes, Shellco absent, Del Meyer?
Yes.
Jacobson absent, Lowery?
Here. Okay, let's make, uh, declare this a legal meeting. Need a motion by, that this regular meeting, uh, December 12th, 2011 be declared a legal meeting. Questions? Roll call.
None? Klinschmidt?
Yes.
Byway?
Yes.
Oshner, Shellco absent, Del Meyer?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Yes. Need a motion that the board excuse the absence of members, uh, Shellco and Jacobson? Comments? Roll call.
Del Meyer?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
None?
Yes.
Oshner, yes, Shellco absent, Jacobson absent, Klinschmidt?
Yes.
Byway?
Yes.
Lowery?
Yes. Hey, we're up for public comments. And then the public's everything. That's Mr. Parker.
Uh, I missed the last couple meetings, but, uh, I read it in minutes in the paper that, um, the board would discuss possibly, uh, lowering the number of members to six. And, um, I guess I just want to stress that, uh, to those committees and the board that I've been on in the last twenty years, that, um, one, when you end up with a even number of board like six, uh, I've never seen that work real well. And also, when you limit the amount of, uh, board members, you set back to like seven or eight. Whenever you do lower that number, um, statistically, you're basically lowering your scope of, of the cross-section of the school district. So, in my opinion, I'd like to see it stay at nine, but, um, you know, it depends on what they want to do.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Uh, we'll move on to reports from the administration. Start off with, uh, Mr. Rose.
Um, just pointing out a couple things that I said. Um, La Croyen had a very successful year. They made the state tournament, or finals last week. Uh, competed very well. Gave you a list of the names of the students. They did a great job. Put in a lot of early mornings, a lot of late nights. As did our, our, uh, One Act. Uh, One Act did an outstanding job. This year, if you had an opportunity to watch their first performance and then their performance in districts, they continue to improve as the year went along. And both, uh, Mrs. Lobby and Mrs. Bond, uh, did a great job of working with those people, those young kids. Uh, busy time wrapping up the end of the semester. We have semester finals next week on Tuesday and Wednesday. And, uh, we have, uh, final thing I'll mention is, uh, Andreas Kamler was selected a student in the month for December. Very deserving young man, very gifted young man, especially in the fine arts, so. Any questions? I'd be happy to address those, otherwise, that's my report.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Rose. Mr. Klein?
Uh, not too much really to add to the written report. Uh, in the, in the written report, I just mentioned, uh, briefly, the, the end of the semester. It is quickly upon us, hard to believe that we've gone, we've gone this far this fast. It seems just, you know, we, we blinked a couple times, you know, and, uh, half the year's gone by. And so, uh, it's been a, been a very good first half of the year. I'm very pleased, lots to be proud of. Uh, we gave you some dates there with regards to the end of the semester and the beginning of the semester after break. It's been a busy four to six weeks for us, uh, at middle school activities-wise. Uh, we've, uh, we've got basketball, girls' basketball, boys wrestling going on. Uh, we had our concert, uh, last week, which was really well attended. Kids did a great job and, uh, really wanted to congratulate them. Um, Ms. Jameson, Mr. K. Skinner, uh, lots of other things going on. Uh, geography bowl was last month, uh, probably one of the better ones we've ever had. It seems like it gets better every year. Uh, what our kids know and what they're capable of doing under that kind of pressure is really, really pretty oppressive. So, um, again, a lot, a lot of great things there. Uh, gave you some information about, uh, the upcoming boys' basketball season, which will start after the break. Uh, our wrestling season, they concluded Saturday, and the girls' basketball concludes tonight now at the Superior Tournament. The only other thing I would expand upon is, uh, the professional development piece. And, uh, really can't, really can't say enough in terms of, uh, uh, thank you as far as, you know, the board allowing us to add, um, that time into our calendar. Uh, required some changes in terms of early outs, those types of things. And, uh, anytime we make a change like that, you know, it's, seems like maybe we're taking a risk or there's some uncertainty. But I really would, would like to thank you for, for allowing us to make that kind of investment. I think it's been, I think it's been a positive, uh, first semester. Uh, we've done a lot of positive things. I think a lot of our staff have appreciated it. I know as, as administrators, we've appreciated having the opportunity. And next year, as we move into our focused school improvement piece, that'll, that will really help us and that will really help what we do for our kids in the classroom. So, again, I really would just like to thank the board for, for allowing us to do that this year and hopefully we can continue to do it, so. Other than that, if you have any questions, I'd be, be happy to answer them.
Any questions, anyone? Thank you, Mr. Klein. Uh, Ms. Rayburn is at the, the event that she has going, the roll kits. And so we're going to Mr. Norvell.
Yeah, Mrs. Rayburn, I know will be here eventually. She's at the TIC Christmas program, which began at 7:00 PM in the, in the elementary gym. Um, I sent to you the first quarter finance report, and I'd be able to review that for you now, uh, quickly. Of course, the first quarter, three months are completed, so as far as budget purposes, that would be approximately 25% of our budget would be used, or we've used 22.6%. I go by the $7,570,000 figure, because remember, we put $500,000 in that we aren't going to spend anyway. That's part of our cash reserve, so that makes it to $8,070,000, so. So we are, you know, currently under budget, which we want to be at this time of year. As far as our district budget, that's the, the smallest used, but that includes the four quarterly ESU payments, and so that first one will be coming up. They bill us for September, October, November. We usually get the bill at the end of December and paid in January. So, uh, the district use budget will catch up with the others before long here as we get the, the quarterly statements in. So, I didn't know if you had any questions. Right now, our revenue, total revenue is a little over $2 million, and our total expenditures are at $1.7 million. And again, that's, that's pretty normal for this time of year, so. Um, I did, I put in a copy of my current contract. I always give the board a copy of my contract every December as we vote on the extension every January, so it gives you an opportunity to look at it. It's the same contract that was issued when I, when I first got here back in 2005. So, there haven't been, uh, no changes to the contract language in any way. Um, a couple other items. School reach, that's our one call to, that we use to notify parents. Well, that, one day last week, it went out at 7:00 AM instead of 7:00 PM. Mrs. Jody clicked the wrong button. So, we did get it stopped after we started getting calls in the office that, you know, we were waking people up. So, uh, I think we were notifying people that we were having the early out the next day. We just sent it out at 7:00 AM instead of 7:00 PM. But I think we got it stopped before it called the whole world, and then we called them again, uh, that evening, so. I apologize for that. And then also, we had, we had a call today from, um, McCool Junction. They had expelled a student. That student actually lives in our district, option two, McCool, and the student was wanting to enroll here. But our board policy, which is 5415.1, says that we do not accept expelled students until they are done with their term of expulsion unless they expressly apply to the board and the board grants it. So I told, I told the mother, we did not accept expelled students, but that she could appeal to the board. So I just let you know that that did occur.
Did that happen this week, today?
I don't know what happened for sure.
This was from the last week or so?
Yeah, she called me, what is today, Monday? She called me today, so. And I talked with, uh, McCool Junction superintendent, so just aware, and if you want to look at the policy, it's 5415.1. 5415 is our expulsion policy, and then 5415.1 basically says we don't accept other people's expelled students. Neither, neither do most public schools. They don't accept expelled students until the expulsion is done. So a lot of times, you can either find an alternative placement or you can find a private school that would take them, otherwise, you know. I did tell her that, uh, if it gets to be summer and the expulsion's done and they, they, uh, cancel their option with McCool, that they, they could look and move in here for the hall. So, that's where that's at, anyway.
My question with that, Mark, is do we have to then offer him education since he's from our district? Do we have to opt him out?
You know, once they opt out of our district, they're the other school's responsibility. So McCool does have to provide.
Okay, yeah, that's all, we'll make sure of that.
Alternative ours, yep. So.
Any questions? I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, I'm done. Answering the questions, if you have questions, if you have.
Not an administrative report, but really, anything you want to ask about state meeting?
Oh, that's right. Well, it's been a long time ago. I did go up on, uh, well, for a day and a half, basically. I went to about four different sessions. And, um, I guess my general take on it is the lawyers really like to hear themselves talk. Uh, some were really good, some were very dry, I mean, hard to listen to. Um, there's, uh, the one that I was probably the most interested in was the building. They were talking about building a project or building a facility. And I think I talked to Mark just briefly about it, but, um, he had a 41-page handout. He got to page eight and went out with 15 minutes. But he was very good. I mean, he was very informative, and, and I think, you know, like, like I said, I talked to Mark a little bit about it. We don't use that particular.
Lawyer.
Lawyer, but, you know, it, it did, it, I guess it brought me up to speed on, because I wasn't on it, but it brought me up to speed on what we've done. That's kind of what he was saying, you know, that that's probably the proper way to handle it. You know, didn't answer a lot of questions, like I said, he, at this point, went briefly, not briefly, but somewhat into detail in, in some of the process, which I thought that was interesting. And the nice thing is, I got to meet some people from building boards, too, so, you know, I guess I found out that, you know, we think we have problems, so does every other district, and, you know, not necessarily the same problem, but, you know. So it was, it was nice to kind of mingle with them a little bit and find out what's going on in their district, so.
Thanks for representing us.
Let's move on to number seven, our action items. And we'll get into a need a motion that the board approve the minutes of November 14th, 2011 regular Board of Education meeting.
So, is that down?
Mr. Klein? Questions? Let's go to the roll call.
Byway?
Yes.
Klinschmidt? Klinschmidt, yes, Shellco absent, Del Meyer?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Jacobson absent, none?
None.
Lowery?
Yes. Okay, we're into B. And the, uh, need a motion that the board approve the financial reports as presented.
Somebody?
Say it.
Okay, questions? Roll call.
Oshner, yes, Donovan?
Yes.
Shellco absent, Del Meyer?
Yes.
Jacobson absent, Klinschmidt?
Yes.
Byway?
Yes.
None?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, general fund claims. A motion that the board approve the general fund claims in an amount of $129,256.19. Okay, general fund claims. A motion that the board approve the general fund claims in an amount of $129,256.19. Need a motion?
I don't know.
Randy and then Jim and. Wow, voices, wow, voices. Questions? Now, roll call.
Uh, Klinschmidt?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Del Meyer?
Yes.
Jacobson absent, Byway?
Yes.
None?
Yes.
Oshner, yes, Shellco absent, Lowery?
Yes. Okay, capital, need a motion for the capital funds that the board approved, uh, payment of the qualified capital purpose funds. Claims in the amount of, sorry, this is a long, very short, uh, I just got big passed and.
Should be on there.
Save on, uh. Martin will pay him $60,000 interest payment, uh, nine, five, fifty-two, and twenty-five, and fifteen. It's on your report.
On my report. Forgot Jody was gone the day Lynn and I sent the packets out, so she normally would have taken care of this. Yes, the total of $69,561.25.
Okay, need a motion? Need a second?
Second.
Yes. Any questions? Roll call.
Donovan?
Yes.
Del Meyer?
Yes.
Jacobson absent, Klinschmidt?
Yes.
Byway?
Yes.
None?
Yes.
Oshner, yes, Shellco absent, Lowery?
Yes. Okay, the, uh, capital, I'm sorry, qualified capital purpose, purpose fund claims have been approved. That the board approved the payment of the vol, of the qualified capital purpose funds claims. It is.
Those key words are bad.
Okay, next one is E, nine, uh, to six member board. Need a motion that the board proceed with formal resolution to revert the Fillmore Central Board of Education from nine to six member board by January 2013. Need a motion?
The motion would, or if we get a motion and a second and it passes, then we would also need to do a resolution that I, that I sent you.
Send, yeah.
Now, the board calendar, it just says that the board should talk about it every November prior to an election year. And so when we talked about it last month, I think Roger, Roger was the one that requested that it be placed on the agenda, Sean. So, I forgot that you had gone to generals in response.
So if there's six board members, what, um, if there's a tie, well, how does that? Because like in city council, the mayor, how does it?
It says, it doesn't pass.
It doesn't pass, so.
It goes around, around, it's like three, three times?
It'd be the same as a failed vote, though. It's.
Do you have to go three times, or?
Don't have to, just go one time, and if the board's satisfied with the three-three vote, you can move on.
If someone doesn't make the vote.
Unless you're like.
You make the motion.
Electing, electing the president or something that requires you to make a decision, that, that'd be different, but.
Just to put it on the table, I'll make the motion to move from the nine to a six.
Sure.
I'll second that when we discuss it.
Yep. Second by Randy. Comments, questions at this time?
I guess I'm gonna throw something out. I think Sean and I, I'm gonna, if you chime in and I say something we didn't talk about, then we'd kind of agree. I think one thing is the people that are going to be going off, in my opinion, should be the ones that, because we're going through, four of those will be going off and only one coming back on. And I guess I kind of feel being on the other side of that, that that's not quite fair that I vote that way. And if they're okay with it, then that's a different thing. And my other comment, and Sean and I talked about this, um, you know, Clark brought something up, too. We've got people that want to run. If we get to a point where we don't have people that want to run, I, to me, going to six would be a really good idea. I don't know, what did we have last year, eight, nine, ten, somewhere in there? If I was lost, so.
And we had at least eight when we agreed on that.
Yeah, so I mean, I mean, in my, in that instance, I guess we've got people that are interested, so, right? You know, I don't know that we want to narrow it down any. Yeah, we'll be sent for a half-six, a stay-in-nine emails and, you know, big board, but I'd like to say the nine.
Well, and I made the motion, but, based on what I've heard from the public, there's not, you know, support. I mean, they'd rather stay at stay-in-nine.
I just, my two cents, I just, today night, uh. I think you get a better representation of the community with a nine-member board, especially since we have a couple different communities involved. It would give people from, uh, outside of Geneva a better chance to serve a board, I think, if there's nine positions rather than six.
I think, uh, we're there, so let's go ahead and do roll call.
No.
Klinschmidt?
No.
Jacobson absent, Byway?
No.
Oshner, yes, Shellco absent, Del Meyer?
Yes.
Donovan?
No.
Lowery?
No. Okay. The board, uh, has declined to move the resolution from, revert the Fillmore Central Board of Education from nine to six board member by January 2013. Okay, thank you, folks. Let's go on to F. Approve the 2010-2011 audit report. Need a motion that the board approve the 2010-2011 audit report as presented.
A second.
Questions? Okay, roll call.
Byway?
Yes.
Oshner, yes, Klinschmidt?
Yes.
None?
Yes.
Shellco absent, Del Meyer?
Yes.
Donovan, yes. Jacobson absent, Lowery?
Yes. Okay, the board has approved the 2010-2011 audit report as presented. G, retirement incentive number for 2012-2013 that the board approved accepting.
Whoever makes the motion will have to fill that.
Retirement, retirement incentive applications for the 2012-2013 school year.
Our policy says that it can be set anywhere from zero to six. So setting it zero just means the policy's not in effect this year, and so the maximum is six. I think we've set it at two, two every year, and I would say about half the years, one or two have taken it, and about half, nobody's taken it. So we do have 10, 10 staff eligible for, for this year, so.
And I know I asked this last year and I haven't answered. What happens if there's, if you set it at two and they're sure for, what's?
There's a, there's qualifications in the policy, and it's by seniority, which I believe seniority, in this case, is age and not years in the district. And so to qualify, you have to have served 15 years in the, either the Fillmore Central or Fairmont districts. And you have to be at least 55 years of age as of this May, this coming May. And then, yeah, three people apply, and then with, it's based upon seniority, with seniority being age first. There's a, there's a pecking order. And I have, I have reminded the staff off and on that informally amongst each other, they ought to be setting their pecking order of who's going to go when, because that, that could happen, Jim. And so, you know, of course, they can still retire.
Right.
They may not be eligible for our incentive.
Is this a problem to set it at a, then to, is it a problem financially?
Based on our current finances, I don't think it would be a problem. It's actually saved us a lot of money over time. You know, for example, I think six years ago, uh, math teacher retired. That was, they're over and down on our pay scale. Uh, you know, over the last five years, the amount of money we save by hiring, uh, you know, a younger, newer employee has saved us a lot of money, so. It's a big chunk, you know, the maximum we pay out is $24,000 a person, that's the max. So for four people, you're looking at, you know, $96,000, $100,000 you'd have to, you have to pay out in a budget year. So, you know, that's.
And that's, that's in the policy?
Yeah. There's a formula that figures out the maximum, the maximum is $24,000. The formula figures anything less than that, but.
Is $24,000 per year about for three years, is that?
Just for one year.
Or just one year?
Just one. $24,000 for one year.
For one, okay.
So, but you look at that as, look at also where they're at on the salary schedule, and the four new people you'd be hiring where they commit at, and, and that, you won't be spending that $100,000 that year. You'll be spending quite a bit less than that that year, and then, you know, the two, or three, or four, or five years to come, you'll easily make that money back. But yeah, it can be, you know, so I guess $100,000, if you would set it at four, the max we'd pay out would be $96,000 in one year. But again, I think we probably recoup that savings over, over the next.
For a three-year, four-year period?
Yeah, absolutely, but.
What would do to our district to lose for people that have been here a long?
That would be.
As far as replacing them.
That'd be the bigger problem, because we have, we have good, good staff, and I hate to lose a chunk of them one year, too, so.
I moved to two.
Need a second?
Second.
Shall I second it? Okay, questions? Yeah, business chair. Questions? Roll call.
Del Meyer?
Yes.
None?
Yes.
Byway?
Yes.
Oshner, yes, Shellco absent. Donovan?
Yes.
Jacobson absent, Klinschmidt?
Yes.
Lowery?
Yes. Board has moved that we approve accepting two retirement incentive applications for the 2012-2013 school year. Okay, move on to H, building fund projects. Uh, need a motion that the board review and approve the building fund projects recommended by committee last month.
The only two projects that we recommended for sure to do was the chiller at the elementary and the lights at the little school. Is that correct, the only committee? I think that was it. We're just looking at some other things, but we still need some more information on. But those were the only two that we recommended at this time.
Motion, please. Maybe. Second, my Jim. Questions, comments? Okay, let's go to roll call.
Klinschmidt?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
None?
Yes.
Oshner, yes, Shellco absent, Del Meyer?
Yes.
Jacobson absent, Byway?
Yes.
Lowery?
Yes. Okay, the board has approved that, uh, review and true of the building fund projects is recommended by the committee last month. Okay, we're on to I. Board member resignation. Need a motion that the board accept the resignation of a, a board member Roger Jacobson except the effect of December 10th, 2011.
I'll make the motion of like a thanking for his, I think, 15 years of service, or?
Got a motion?
I'll second.
Second by Randy. Questions, comments? Everybody get the letter that was sent to Mr. Norvell? Copy in your packet.
Roger, Davey, and I came on board at the same time, so I spent a lot of hours at the table with Roger. And, uh, we often, well, not often, but we disagree once in a while. I remember when, um, the administrators proposed wrestling for the school. And we were a six-member board, and Roger and I just went round and round about that wrestling. He didn't think it was necessary, neither did Dave. But, uh, four to two, we, we passed wrestling. But even though we had all these discussions, after the meeting, Roger and Dave and I, uh, really communicated well. And so I can't speak for the board, but for myself, I'd just like to thank Roger for his years of service.
15 years, sound right to you?
16 or something like that.
He said 16, I never counted.
Yeah. But Jody was trying to figure it today, you know, he had a year left on his term. So she thought it was 15, regardless, 15 or 16, it's still very good.
I would say we'll have to.
Yeah.
Make sure it's.
They didn't think.
Yeah.
And like the rest of you said, Roger and I spent some time just visiting about this, and this was not an easy decision. But we need to move on from here. I hate saying it, folks, but that's how it is. Any other questions, comments?
I'm gonna listen.
Yes. All right, let's go to roll call.
Lightwing?
Yes.
Flanshman?
Yes.
Ochsner, yes. Shalkoff absent. Dillmeyer?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Jacobson absent. None?
Yes.
Lillard?
Yes.
The board has approved the resignation of board member Roger Jacobson effective December tenth, two thousand and eleven.
In the meantime, you may be thinking for next month, what we need to do. I'll give you basically three scenarios, because we've done all three in the past. Last, the last resignation, I think we had was Bob Webb's. He resigned also in December, and his term was up. So at the next November election, we just didn't fill his seat. We left it open for a year and then had it at the next, next election. We have also, when a board member resigns, we have advertised on the, on the web and in the school newsletter, and took applications from the public, and then went through and selected based on an application. We've done that. We've also gone back to the last board election and, and asked the, the next candidate on the list if they would be interested. So we've done any of those, those three things, so. You might take some time, think about what you'd like to do, and we'll, you know...
And Roger's up, right?
Roger would be, yeah, would be up, yeah.
Well, as I say, the one with the applications, we never did fill that position.
Right.
The only one we filled is the, the one where we went back to our last board member, our last vote. It's all already done.
I know we, we offered it out before.
Well, we did first thing by not doing it.
Yeah.
And I, and I guess the reason we did that that time is because you didn't figure... Because he wouldn't, they probably... The person probably wouldn't get going until at least February.
Right.
And then serve very long, and...
But, but they would at least be able to run as an incumbent.
Right.
I think it was, I think when, I think Dave resigned at one time.
Yes.
And we took applications, and we were, I think we were ready to offer to one, and then Dave rescinded his resignation as he was going to stay here. So I think we've used all three processes informally at least, but I mean, there may be other options, too, but just wanted to recite to you the, at least the three that come to my mind, and how we need to be thinking about that, and what we'll need to make, make a decision, you know. You know, we certainly can do whichever, whichever you feel like you'd like to do.
So we decide that at the December?
Well, you can either decide right now, and then we'll make the decision in the January meeting, or you can wait and decide at the January meeting, and we could put it in place by the December.
So we should decide by...
Wonder when incumbents go fly off? It's like February.
I was gonna ask Jody that. I think it's February first, isn't it?
I was gonna say, last part, yeah, the last part of January, for some reason, I moved incumbents' months.
Yeah, because then the non-com incumbents have another month after that, if I remember right, so. It might not be February first, but that rings a bell to me.
Could you put you late a little bit, otherwise we're picking incumbents.
Right. Well, I guess I'd disrupt it. We did this last time, and I think the reasons are genuine, that we're almost picking incumbents, and they're not even serving long. I guess I'd just throw out that we leave it open till the next. It's probably something we'll need to vote on in January, then, you think?
Well, I think we should make a public vote on how we're gonna do it.
It's a year, Pat? Well, actually, like you said, it's less than a year.
It's just like, it's just like when Bob left.
Well, I mean, that's what we said...
Same thing.
Exactly. Your Bob left resigned in December, just exactly like this.
Yeah.
And I, if you talk to our legal counsel, which I did at the time, they prefer you fill the position. They prefer, but they're saying, but they said you can do it, but I think their feeling is your, your obligation to the taxpayers is as a nine-member board and such. But I don't, I don't think it's mandatory that we do it.
I, I think one of the things, this is my opinion, that we go back and we look at, who is the next person up on the, the board, on, because they're the ones who put their names out there. Okay, and if she chooses not to, then you go to the next one. If they choose not to, then you go next, then if that fails, then you go to the...
But I think when we did that, that was with you, Sean, but your, your numbers were real close to the next person.
Yeah, it was.
I don't know what, what numbers were.
It was a longer term, too, if I'm not wrong.
I was two years.
Two years. Two years.
I guess, I guess I'm kind of bothered, and maybe, sure, it, it's taken me a while to figure out what's going on. Not that I didn't try, but this is one year. So if you put somebody on for one year, you know, better off. Yeah, they can learn again, but I don't, I guess I'm kind of, you know, I guess I kind of, let's see, just, let's see, with on my, my...
It was an eight.
You know, we're gonna stay at nine, and we're not going back to six, so.
And then we did, we went into that with that eight going, hey, guys, you might end up being split at one point in time, knowing that that could happen. I'm cool, okay, either way, I really, with those terms.
I really want to think about it some more and talk about it along the agenda for next one.
I'd see...
I think we need to make a clearer decision sometime.
I do, too. I think you gotta think over it.
I guess I'd, I'd like to do that.
We can put it as an action item next month and have it, leave it kind of open-ended as whoever makes the motion and go from there, you know?
And discuss, you know, maybe we'll get some feedback from people in the community with what they're about to say. Since it was kind of close to our meeting when we found out, so.
That finishes up the agenda items. And now we are, or action items, I'm sorry, action items, and now we are into our discussion items. These may require executive sessions. And first up is board evaluations. Everybody get that in their packet? Questions, comments on it?
The board evaluation is done in December, and then we'll discuss it in January, or do we take it? Isn't that what the policy says? We make some kind of a formulation for next year?
As I say, I think last year, we discussed it, and then came up with, just even this is a new formula of board evaluation. So we go back and we look at the points, we look at the goals that we have up here. I think there's a lot to take in.
Well, we do a work session. Work session. Good timing. Air codes. Look at it, too. I mean, at least maybe look it over for a while.
Yeah, I think so. Work session.
Do you want to look at it?
Is that why you can set goals?
And this will be for the next president, then, for next year, is the whole idea, then, of setting that up, and who becomes the president.
The policy says the board shall at least annually completing evaluation of its own performance. The performance evaluation form shall be completed by each board member during the month of December, which we did. Results of the evaluation shall be reviewed at the regular meeting in January, and that areas of strength and weakness shall be identified and reviewed.
All right, so we put it on the session.
I'll write you a note, too. Put it on the session for next week.
Yeah.
Okay. Next up is B, facility committee update.
All right. Last, let's see, two weeks ago, I think it was, that we met Facilities Committee on a Wednesday night, had a good turnout. We met with the architect, Clark Anderson Partners, and the construction manager, Samson, and we had, I think, approximately twenty-five people in attendance, and we had good exchange back and forth. We had a few board members there, so hopefully they can help me correct all this. We talked about lots of things. We talked about the main bond issue items, the performance theater, the gym, remodeling science rooms, two locker rooms, a weight fitness room, a wrestling room, and remodeling the front entryway. And when we did, we're doing a climate survey right now on the internet to all of our K-12 parents, and I think we've had ninety-three responses so far, which is pretty good. And we had them prioritize those seven things. And the, the order that I just read them to you, that's right now the, the order of priority to our, our, at least our K-12 parents, and I'll read it to you again, was performance theater, gymnasium, remodeled science rooms, two locker rooms, weight and fitness room, wrestling room, and remodeled front entryway. So that was their, their priority list. We also, then, at the meeting that night, we talked about some things that came up that led to maybe a little bit more. One of them was, you know, if you look at the ground where we have to build, which is to the north, and somewhat to the west, and even to the east, if you put a performance theater back there, which was our number one priority according to our parent-based poll, well, then, to me, that's where your music, or to the group, that's where your music and band ought to be, too, is back next to the performance theater. So, so that got into discussion, and then what could we, what could we take the current band music room and do? Could that then become your weight and fitness room, or could that become your concession area that we really don't have much of, or whatever? So, you know, what's gonna happen this Wednesday night at seven o'clock, and we advertise it as a board work session, so it would have, will have to be opened by the board and closed by the board, but we also advertise that there would be no action taken, so that's basically the only thing the board has to do, is open the meeting and close the meeting, is that they're gonna come again, and they're gonna have some designs. They're gonna have some designs at different places through the building, and they're gonna give us, I don't know, two, three, four, five different scenarios, and so they're, they're asking for input on, you know, which one looks the nicest, and they're gonna start throwing out some dollar figures and whatever. Okay? The key, the key piece in this is a timeline, okay? And, and because of the primary election in May, if you're gonna have your own special election, then you have to do that prior to so many days before and/or up to so many days after. Well, if we wanted to have it, let's say, we have to have it prior to April first if we're gonna have it in the spring. The date that we need to have it is March thirteenth, because I believe Clark Anderson talked to the county clerk, and she said it's gotta be the second Tuesday of the month. Okay? So that would be the thirteenth of March. If it's gonna be the thirteenth of March, the board has to pass a resolution for bond issue by the twenty-third of January, because you gotta do that fifty days prior. So, you know, at our January ninth board meeting, I guess if you're ready for that, that would be something we could do, or else we would need a special meeting prior to January twenty-third if the board is interested in that. From the community that we had present at the meeting two weeks ago, they were, they were interested in sooner than later, okay? They would rather do it in March than do it in July or August.
So you're not even considering doing it?
Uh, doesn't really matter to me, but that's what came out of that particular meeting, is that they would rather it had its own special merit, its special election. We talked about a mail-in ballot, too, Sherri. You can do mail-in ballots now.
Oh, no, they talked about it during the construction manager, Rips.
Yeah. So, pretty much that's, I think that's what came out of the meeting, was let's try to do it in March. Well, I thought we could do it at the end of March. Well, you can't do it at the end of March, I guess. You have to do it on the second Tuesday in March, which would be the thirteenth, so. I did, I did tell the people that were at that meeting that when the board talked about it last year in July, basically, the board said this was something that we're gonna take to the public. And they had made an official vote to take it to the public, but that was basically the consensus of the board to take it to the public. So that's, that's another reason I think that I'd like as many of yous that can, could come Wednesday night and, and talk to them about the timeline. If you think this is too quick, or, you know, you need to know some dollars, you need to know some things, and so we, I think we have plenty of time to know that. With the holidays and everything, that puts a little bit of a, of a timeline on us, but I think that Clark Anderson can answer any questions you might have, and Samson, and I've invited emeritus to come also Wednesday night. Jess and Jim and Dave, you were there. Am I leaving something out that we...
No, that's...
Jan was there, too.
Jan was there.
Yeah.
I, I left. I had to. So I wasn't in on this, this part of the conversation. I guess my initial thought is, that's awful early for us to have to make a decision. We really don't, I mean, obviously, we all know a lot more in one more week, but I just think that's pretty quick, but that's just me, my initial thought here and that. Just, I mean, and I realize you're gonna do a lot of education between January twenty-third and March thirteenth.
We'd have the month of February to do all of our public meetings. The design, of course, wouldn't be ultimately finished, probably, you know what I mean, a finished product, but it, it never is. You know, they have, they have this here and that there and whatever, while, you know, they make changes all the time, even during the, the actual building of, of everything, so.
So the, so like, the public would basically be voting on whether to do it or not with a, a proposed plan, if I can better term.
And a dollar figure.
And a dollar.
And the plan, you know, there could be some...
But there's not, if not like something major, wouldn't all of a sudden be in it?
No.
Wouldn't all of a sudden be out?
No.
Well, it depends, yeah. It depends on, like, you have so much money to work with. And if the construction manager said, you may give a good deal on this wall over here, so then we can put two walls up here. So really, the final decision of the building itself is up to the board. It's not up to the public, the way I understand it. And the location, I've always pictured the auditorium over here on this side, so when we drove up to the school, we saw, well, he didn't think that was the word. So he was, he's proposing either an auditorium over here, or an auditorium over here, and then a gym over here, and just leave the west side the way it is.
They don't like the slope too much, the big issue.
Yeah, they didn't like that slope.
But he may come in with something different, too. He's gonna bring in some, some different plans, so.
So really, what I understand that we're voting on is the, the dollar amount, which they can tell us, and a rough drawing of, is that what you understand?
And the date, the date of the election. That, that would all be set by the board if that, in that resolution last year.
I think one of the reasons, too, that the people that were there from the committee wanted to do it in March rather than in summer is because they see each other a lot during the school year and activities and so forth, to workout meetings and things like that. And then, once the summer starts, and they don't see much of each other, so it'd be harder to get people together to organize the...
And it's not, it's not like, this hasn't been talked about for a substantial period of time. That committee's worked on it for over two years, so that, what looks like a short period to us has really been a long process to some of them, and they're, they're, they're tired of waiting, you know? they're tired of waiting, you know?
They want to see something.
They want to see, see something done, so. And it's both the Construction Manager and the, and the architect said it's doable. A timeline like that is doable. If the board gets them a resolution before the January 23rd, gives us plenty of time to, to refine the design and present to the public the whole month of February, however we want to do it, and even through the first week of March when we have parent-teacher conferences and everything. So that would, that would give us.
Second day will be, the day will be second day of practice.
Is that what it is?
Isn't that the week of?
Seems like it's about a week later.
Parent-teacher conference on Monday?
13th seems late.
Oh, are they?
It seems a week later than that.
Is it okay?
If I'm not positive. But you have numerals, parent-teacher conferences.
Is it okay I apologize?
He might be right too, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to say.
Any other comments? Questions?
Or that will be an action item?
It has to, yeah. Let's see.
It doesn't have to be if you want to have a special board meeting between the 9th and the 23rd, but we could have it as an action item if that's.
How many more meetings?
Title by an, the next. Is there a third?
After this Wednesday, there would, there would be, there would be another facilities meeting before that next board meeting. So, I mean, we would have much.
So we have, we need to have more information before.
They won't, we would have to try to schedule another one now. That's a little tough to do over the holidays again, but we would make something work there.
So you're saying there's one Wednesday night, then you're trying to have another one before the next one?
Yeah. We've talked about, like, I think it's Wednesday, January 4th maybe?
Which would be just prior to.
Yeah, we start school, I think, on the 3rd or the 4th of January. So whenever that Wednesday, Thursday night, we'd be there, so.
The meeting you have Wednesday night, I saw some advertisers opening in here.
Yeah, sure.
I had a couple of people ask, so.
Hands and paper.
Do you want to put it as an action item, folks, or do you want to leave it off?
I think we should put it in as an action item.
That's why the public knows too. That's the biggest part. Okay, let's, any other questions, comments in there? If not, let's move on to the C, professional growth policy, if they should have one, Board Policy 4175.
The principals and I have been working on this for some time. The, the main, the main reason we would like to change, let me start with professional growth is mandated to all certificated faculty members by law. Every six years, they have to have taken, I think it's six semester hours of either college credit or other, other types of, of work sessions, et cetera, professional growth. So our current policy is there. It's marked on top in red, and it's somewhat, somewhat cumbersome, difficult to understand. It grants some salary credit for lots of these items, but yet our own negotiated agreement doesn't grant them salary credit for any of those items. So it's also in conflict with our negotiated agreement a little bit. And what we've done is taken that professional growth model and just altered it a little bit. And we want to give them credit for some of the commitment that we're doing to professional growth on our Wednesday afternoons, et cetera. So we hopefully made it a little bit simpler process for our staff to, to, to get credit for, for these growths, and made it a little bit simpler process for both Jody and I and the principals to figure out if people qualify for professional growth credit. So I'd just like to think that we took the same policy and just simplified it a little bit. And the principals and I met and worked on this a couple of different times. And so we're presenting this to you. I don't think there's a, a lot of major changes. We've taken, I think there's 11 categories in the first one for professional growth, and we merged them and made it into eight professional growth categories. But we haven't really, we probably eliminated a couple of them, but they were ones that weren't used anyway, that we didn't actually use for professional growth, so. My best explanation would be we just tried to simplify the actual form and policy for our staff to get their six semester hours of, of growth.
Is everybody due this?
They have to do it? Yeah. Yep. I had to answer any questions you might have.
Any other questions or any questions, folks? Good. Let's go ahead and move on to Board, the D Board Policy Review Series 2000.
There were just two policies that were checked for further review, and that was 2020 School Superintendent Qualifications and 2035 School Superintendent Evaluation. So I enclosed both of those and opened it up for whatever changes people want to consider.
2020 was our type. It's in that last sentence, the superintendent shall be in, able?
Oh, take out the "in." Any other changes to 2020? That'll be easy one to correct. About 2035 then? Those, those two sentences there allowed anyway.
Yeah.
The date of the election may be altered by mutual consent of the parties.
I guess I'd like to see some evaluation forms for those who use for their superintendent. I wasn't highly pleased with ours. I guess I'd never paid too much attention to the position of the study. If we could have several different samples and pick out one.
I did, I realized there was, oh, about that. Went to public schools for a while, and I kind of liked what they were doing. It was either satisfactory or not satisfactory. It was a 1, 2, 3, 4, either we meet the criteria or not. And if you're, and then they, then they actually put one in for, you know, if you're doing super, you know, or at the top end. And, and their thing was, if you put it in the middle and said meeting, they're satisfactory, you didn't need to put a comment. But if it was unsatisfactory, or you're doing this tremendous job, then they want to run a comment. I kind of like that, because some of these, you know, you've got 1, 2, 3, 4, it's like, well, yeah, I mean, it's, it's somewhere in here. And I, I like that. It made, made you think of why you're going to, you know, either give a 1 or a 3. And that was true in public schools. And I did kind of like the way they were talking, so.
Make any assignments of who's going to try to collect some, or?
Oh, I think this can, well, Jody should collect.
You can probably get some samples.
Okay.
We want to hear about Mark's.
Well, I guess not, because.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mark, I've.
Oh, no, that's fine. The December, if we're going to follow that, that's all right. We'll just have a little discussion about what it said December in there, so we're going to have to do it in December. Just so we're all on page.
Somewhere in there to say at least in December.
I mean.
Or by.
Yeah, by, by December before or.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. So it does leave it open.
So you can change one word is what you're saying. So we conducted in December, conducted by December.
I think so.
Just in front of the third line on the second program, by December is going to be December. I think it's the superintendent down the boards.
Second program.
It managed to do it earlier than December.
By December.
Because if the board is certain and the superintendent is certain, that gives him more options if it's done before December. So I think it should be done October and November.
In, in the, my previous school, when I was evaluated too, we agreed, we agreed upon the form of evaluation, and we agreed upon the manner that it was going to be done. And, and, you know, we agreed upon, for example, I'll give you an example, superintendent-staff relationship. If you look at my evaluation, it's, it's widespread. Somebody says, Mark and his staff, they don't get along at all. Somebody says, he's done the best at this in the 20-year period I've been a boardman. Well, which is, you know, well, it wouldn't be too hard to find out. I mean, we have email, we got surveys, we have, we have ways to do it. What we did at my previous school was six-member board, two board members were assigned to like each category. And so I would give, I would give that board member 10 staff people that I wanted him to talk to. And then they would get, the board would pick 10 staff members that they wanted to talk to, that'd be 20. And so you at least got a representative sample of what, of what people say the superintendent-staff relationship is. My evaluation, I don't know how you can tell. It's just people's opinions, and it's just your opinions. And I don't know that how much in-depth questioning or finding out, you know, that any of you did. Because how, how could you have done any? When somebody says it's terrible, and somebody says it's the best, well, what is it? You know, it's got to be somewhere in between. Same for, you know, superintendent-community relationship. How are you going to measure that? You know, if you talk to five people, is that enough? Or you send out a survey? Or what are you, what are you going to do? I think you have to find benchmarks and way to measure. It's not just your opinion on an evaluation. You know, you got to have a way to measure. If, if my principals evaluated a teacher the way that some of you evaluated me, you know, I would, I would disregard it. That's not, that's not how you evaluate. You evaluate productively and constructively. When we go into a teacher evaluation, our goal is to make them better. Our goal is to make them better. So if we don't like where they're at now, we find a constructive way to set up some steps for them to measure, for them to, to improve, and to gain, to gain benchmarks. I do the same thing when I evaluate my principals. So I don't, this evaluation, and I tried to tell you back in September, this evaluation this way is useless. You know, it's useless to me, because what in there is defined for me, what is defined steps for me to, to improve as superintendent of Fillmore Central? Because there's no, there's no consensus or agreement by the board on any one of those categories. And so, you know, it's, it's difficult, difficult for me, because I, I've told Dave, I've told Mark, I've told others that, you know, if you as a board want me to get better, then you better agree, then you better agree on what I need to do to get better. And, and show me where that is in that evaluation. I mean, it's, it's not in there, unless I misread it. But it's just, it's just wide variety of opinions, and it's, it's just worthless, worthless to me as, as an evaluating tool. And, you know, I think, I think you're on the right structure here. I think we need to find something. But I, but I still think, you know, again, you've used Don Fritz before, and maybe some of you don't like him, and maybe you want to go some other direction. But I, I think, I really think the board could use some help by an outside party in conducting a proper superintendent evaluation, because I'm not sure that this tool is going to bring us forward very much. So, you know, and I, and I might be wrong. But, you know, we did, here's what means the most to me, and I'm kind of jumping discussion items and down to my evaluation. But on the last sentence of our climate survey, we, we asked a question. It says, "For the most part, I am satisfied with the Fillmore Central Public School District." And 67 people have said they agree, that's 77%. Four people have disagreed, that's four and a half percent. 16, 16 were neutral. I don't know what neutral means. It means they don't want to answer the question, I guess. But, but to me, that's more of an indicator of, of administrative performance, is when 77% of people on the survey are, are content with the Fillmore Central School District. That means more to me than an evaluation with nine different opinions constantly on every page, you know?
I think that's what Randy asked for, is if we can have some different things to look at, some different forms, that would give us a little bit better instrument to use.
Well, it's not just the instrument, it's also evaluating all the criteria on the instrument.
And I understand, Mark. I'm a little disappointed that now we're talking six years. We should have been doing this a long time ago, changing this thing out. So I'll take accountability there for the last couple of years. You know, and that's something that we need to look at. But like I said, then others need to take a look at them the years before that. And we've messed up for the last, doing what you're saying, and not messed up, but we've not given you a firm direction for the last seven years.
Well, I, I don't know that it's been the last seven years, but at least the last couple. And, and that's why I started the conversation in September. I think what I asked the board to do was to, to go into closed session and, and, and work all this out and come out with one evaluation, you know, with one opinion in each category. Yes, Mark does well at this. Or, yes, but here's some things we'd like to see done. I mean, wouldn't that be more useful to me if it did that? And there's, there's none, none of that in here. There's none of it. And, and, you know, maybe, maybe you can't come to consensus on what needs to be done. But, but truly, that's what I asked for back in September. I mean, you know, that's what I asked for, and I think I asked for it again in October. And so, you know, I, I just think that, that, you know, I'll get you whatever information you need or, or whatever. But I just think that it really, it really hasn't done us much good to use the form that we're, not just the form, but the method that we're using right now also.
Well, understandable. Like I said, I don't want to jump ahead. Let's get back to where we need to, and then we'll get into further down there.
So I'm getting some sample forms. Yeah, I don't think it's the form as much as it's the methodology.
Well, that's fine. This is all we've got.
Okay, guys, let's, let's go ahead, let's continue on. If you want to go further, I don't think this is the place to open that one up. So, the next one is E, ethanol plant energy comfort, uh, conversation, shoot.
I don't have anything there, because Tony never did get back.
Groopers.
Tony had called me and said there was a chance that the ethanol plant was going to get a grant, and this grant would be like for community service, and he wanted to know if the school would be interested. And I said, maybe, but we would have to know the details. And he says, well, when I find out if we get the grant, I'll get back to you. So I put it on as a discussion item, just in case he got back to me. And he's only got back to this other week, we can skip that.
You want to put that for next month again?
I'll, I'll talk to him first, and then we'll, we'll see.
Okay, that's fine. With you guys' approval, I'd like to jump from the superintendent evaluation to the next board meeting, and.
I would rather, I would rather, if possible, we could use it, move it to that Wednesday, January eleventh to like five-thirty. Yeah, I know Wednesdays aren't always a great night, but I just, you know, Jana and Jim, Sean and I, the kids playing, we just, I feel bad about missing his game tonight, and this week, we just had games every night the way it is, so, you know, we didn't have a whole lot of choices, but if that would work, that would, I would sure appreciate it if we could, or if there's another suitable date that the board would like to consider.
And when you brought that up, Mark, and I have no problem with throwing this out to the board, is that next year that we really look at our board meetings and what we have set for people's agendas and so forth. I mean, that's, that's just what I, because I really agree with what you're saying. I mean, you know.
The board that you guys.
You know, and I know that's our number one goal, but I also know we have responsibility here too, and that's what makes it really difficult, so I'm just throwing that out there. I'm okay with moving it if it won't be.
It's going to be all right, five-thirty on the eleventh.
Five-thirty's the one.
How we doing earlier, so we can get a shirt here?
Is there a time better for? I don't care. I can excuse myself every once in a while for a break.
Six o'clock then? Six? All right? Okay. Was that going to be six o'clock?
It'll be six o'clock.
On Wednesday, January.
Wednesday, January eleventh. Discussion. You want to discuss your evaluation, or go to executive?
I, I don't need executive session, you guys can if you wish to, but again, I don't have anything to discuss, because I don't think it's very clear, I don't think there's any clear direction given to it, so I don't, I don't, you can, you can discuss and I'll listen.
Folks, anybody else? Comments?
Is that for Mark to ask us questions?
If there are no questions, or you don't want to go there, that's, we'll go to number nine, adjournment. Uh, need a motion that this regular meeting of December twelfth, two thousand and eleven be adjourned at, at eight forty-four P.M. Any questions, comments? Roll call.
Clayline.
Yes.
Frenchman. Joe, cop, absent, Delmy. Donovan. Yes. Jacobson, absent, none. Oshner, yes, and all of them.
Yes. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, folks.